Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Town, we need to roll in surplus. Basically, we have to tax, to when taxes come in. And I just went back and looked at what it has been for the last three years. And it's way more than enough. So we're just suggesting taking $20,000 off of that by reducing what we're asking to raise in taxes by $20,000. And just see where it's at next year. And if we still have more than enough, we can look at keeping that a point of balance.
That sounds good to me.
So we're...
It would reduce the surplus by $20,000 for reduction in taxes.
And it really doesn't even, you know, the total tax assets is like the combination of the savings and the checking accounts. And so you see, it's been over $200,000 in every year. Last year before we paid the paving job, it was under $500,000. So we have a lot that we can borrow from.
We have to have so much money on hand for the funds.
What's that?
We have to have so much money.
But that money is there.
Yeah, that's why that money is there.
That's why the money is there. The capital of funds all come.
Yes.
Right, but it's fine if the general highway even goes negative for a couple of months because we have so much in the other funds. If we're not making a big purchase, we can pull a fund. So yeah. So maybe some surplus and account dollars to reduce taxes. We'll reduce, yeah, we'll reduce the overall amount to be raised in taxes by $20,000. And then we'll just check back in with that next September 1st. We want to check in on health insurance for the new highway employee. And there's, it's not right there, there was the, there's the new, there's the new plan for the premiums. So down that bottom row, the platinum.
So you ask them.
This is mine and Matt has a family plan, which is our...
Each one.
Each one. And that's what it would be for a single. But you get to decide which ones you want to offer.
Well, I think, I think that we should still offer the same as we do now. That we will pay 80% of the platinum.
Yeah.
And if they go to a lower priced one, that's, that's fine, but we, and then we will pay the same amount that 80% of the platinum would be. So if they've picked a goal, they may not have to put in as much money for it. Is that reasonable?
Yep.
Now, who's going to check with Eugene, which platinum he wants?
Town is going to pay 80% of the, we're going to pay.
80% of the platinum plan.
Platinum.
And if they choose lower, we would still go up to the amount that the platinum plan would be. Do you know if you'll have a single plan or a point you find out?
And who's like his manager or whatever? We would sit down and figure out with him which, what plan he's going to get. Is that Matt?
Matt.
Or is that this left ward?
Matt would do that.
So she would give that.
Give that.
And then let Darlene and I know by middle of... Well, he's, so he's not eligible until three months in, right?
Three months in.
So that would be December 16th. And probably, I don't know if he wants to start on the 16th or start in January right first.
I don't think they'll let you start on the 16th. I think it'll be January 1st.
I think so. And that's great because that's when enrollment starts anyways for the insurance company, so.
Yeah, I don't think they'll let you start in the middle of the month.
But let Darlene and I know by, I mean, let the budget committee know.
Soon as you can.
Soon as you can. But then we'd have to enroll them in December.
Yep.
Do we have a form somewhere that you need to fill out for that? Or did we do that form? Did I put it back in the envelope?
Yeah, that's in the...
Okay.
All right.
So trash, this is a real question. Costs are slightly up. It's going to have gone up $2,000 over what we budgeted for this year. So I think we budgeted $32,000 and it's going to be about $34,000 for this year. And we're guessing it's going to be more next year.
And the, the price of recyclables only going up.
Yep.
Is what I heard. They don't know exactly, but you could budget there as much as like 140 a ton for recyclables.
Which isn't, again, isn't a huge amount in our total bill, but it will creep up. We were thinking of budgeting $36,000 for next year and then perhaps splitting the difference with a 50 cent raise on the bags. And then the rest of it would add to taxes. For every 50 cents on the bags, we get about $2,000, I think.
Additional one.
Towards the, towards the cost.
Well, I'll make a motion that we raise the bag price to 350 starting January 1st. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's pretty much what everybody else is charging already around this.
Now, legal services, that's, that's another thing that we never know what we're going to, what we are going to be facing, so. We don't have any outstanding court actions at this moment. There may be, you never know what's going to come up.
So it was higher last year because we knew you had something. So we had it at $5,000 last year and you almost, you spent $4,600. And I know we raised that to $5,000 from maybe like $3,000 a year before, or even $2,000. So would it maybe be reasonable since there's nothing?
Why don't we move it back to $3,000?
Okay.
And hope that we don't...
I believe the issue.
And then a couple of questions for Darlene. So maybe in our office, that you can think of anything that we need for office equipment. Okay. Or supplies or...
Land records book?
Land records book I just bought one, so that should be good through until another year.
The idea that if we don't build a vault, we should be thinking about buying another safe.
Where are you going to put it?
Get rid of the...
Or can we get rid of smaller ones and put...
We could do that.
And drums?
Or we could put it up with the old...
Building hook safes up there.
Put safes in the basement up there.
Yeah?
Something that, you know, we weren't using regularly, we could put up there.
Yeah, that's true.
How much does a safe cost?
Hmm, vault, that's a great idea.
Yeah, and, and I would think that we would look to a used safe, not a new safe.
Where did we find the last one? Wasn't it down to Keene?
No, we found these, these down at Keene, but...
No, no, no. We found a safe down there too because we had to take planks down to get it.
I don't remember. I thought it was Woodstock that we got the big new safe out there.
It was before me, I don't know.
I think it was Woodstock that we got that from, the town of Woodstock or something. But yes, it was a long time ago.
You wrote something on the BLCT classifieds?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can see safes online pretty, you know, pretty often. And they're not terribly expensive.
What about that place up in Montpelier?
I've never seen safes there. I've seen some...
Fireproof.
Fireproof cabinets and stuff, but I've never seen... But we could always let them know if they get a safe in to give us a call, but I've never seen one there. You know, I, I'm thinking $1,000, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. But that's just a guess.
You definitely think we should get one next year?
Well, do you have much space in the one you've got?
I've got enough space. I could probably clean out more space, but I put a lot somehow each year.
Well, why don't we put it in the budget and if we can find it, even if we just stick it up there, have it so when we do need it, you know, we do find it.
I mean, I have a question too though, is if, so we're pending this decision of what to do with that school building and if it's decided to move the town office up there and we build a vault, well then we won't be safe, so...
Well, you're still going to be... Vaults, you know...
That we won't take the place of...
Rockingham down there almost lost everything they had to a busted pipe because they were just lucky that somebody was there and caught it quick enough to where they could shut the water off. Because if it happened in the middle of the night, they would have lost everything in that vault.
Yeah.
So vaults are not 100%.
But if we have a vault, would we also, would we have like safes inside the vault?
No, no, no. You got, there's plenty of room to keep the safe outside the vault. You could just put a whole line of safes up there also. You know, you can have, just to keep stuff locked up.
I guess I don't understand then why you would put a vault in if it's...
I don't, we really don't need a vault. You know, you could have just a bunch of safes. Right now, the only reason why we needed a vault here, we have no room to put a safe out there. You've got to get rid of safes to put in a bigger safe. So now you're taking the stuff out of the smaller one to fill up into the bigger one just to give it a little bit more room to shove stuff in. And pretty quick, you know, you can maybe able to do that twice and you should have a lot.
I, I mean, I think we should look for one and if we find one at a reasonable price, it seems like a decent safe.
So we'll put $1,000 in the budget?
To town office. Is that reasonable with you?
Yeah.
Whoever's...
So, I mean, does anybody not like that idea?
No.
We need it.
Okay. And that would be an equip, that would be an equipment purchase, I guess. So we'd have that under equipment.
Or, or, but it would be on to town office, right?
Yeah. Yeah, like office equipment, I think is what I'm looking for. So we were confused about how dog tags worked and how we have it in the budget, so...
Okay, what happens is usually about this time of the year, September I should say, I get a notification in the mail to order dog licenses and the dog tags. And I send it in, we don't usually get the bill until January.
Okay. And it's from, it's from the state themselves or...
No, it's an IDA, I can't remember, it's IDA something.
And do you know how much the bill usually is for that?
Around 100.
Okay.
But then, isn't that money supposed to come out of the dog licenses?
Well, the dog licenses go into the general fund, didn't they?
But I think by statute that we're supposed to keep the dog licenses separate, at least a line item, but I mean...
Sorry, I think we need to fix the system so that what we're saying is true. Because it's confusing here right now.
I, I don't think the dog money is supposed to go in just to the regular income. I think it's supposed to be...
Or at least it should be tracked.
It should be tracked separately and it's then supposed to be if there's dog damage, if they kill livestock or something like that, then that is the money that we're then supposed to use to pay.
So do you want to create a separate fund?
Oh, I don't think of separate fund, just a line item, I think.
But I mean, line item is not, you're talking about if there's damage that you need the money to pay for...
I think that statutorily, that's the way it's supposed to be, that it's supposed to stay in there.
We can't, we can't keep stuff year to year unless it's in a separate fund.
No, I understand. But once the year's gone, then there's no damage that year, then the money will come back for the next year. Now...
So we're supposed, so we track income. So basically we need a separate revenue line for the town's portion of the dog licenses as a revenue and then the expense.
Now, I don't know if we can take out, if we have stray dogs and we have to put them in the human society. I don't know if that money can come out of there or not. It may be able to, but it may not.
That's an interesting idea because we're now paying money to the Wyndham County Human Society. We don't have a line item for that. We pay how much each year for that?
I'm not sure of the exact amount, but...
We do have a under clerk's office animal license.
As a revenue.
As a revenue, yes.
So maybe we should leave that's where the town's portion should go and then the portion that goes to you goes under clerk's fee?
Yes.
It's very confusing because...
Then we have one that goes in the state.
And then the state goes under the liability.
Yeah.
The town, okay. So it's so confusing because with the money goes to separate.
It does.
Yeah, I, I only think that because it's statutorily, but I can't quote you the statute on it, but it's supposed to be kept separate. I mean, it's not all that much money and doesn't need to be, but...
Right. Okay. So basically the tags, when we pay for the tags, the tag ID vendor, that should come out of the town's portion of the... So we don't need to budget the line item, we just can take that out of that. Okay? Okay. I think I understand.
So we need to create a line item.
Do you think we can ask?
No.
Do we want to meet in November again? Or do we think we're going to have it all set now?
So when, yeah, when do you want to approve the final budget?
Probably in December, wouldn't we? Isn't that what we did last year? Yep.
So would you want to look through all of the numbers next month or just wait until December? And we should probably have them all put together, I mean, like 80, 90% of it put together by next month. We're making progress.
Why don't we wait till December? If we have to, we can have a special meeting instead of adding onto a select board meeting. Not make everybody...
So we'll plan to do like an hour before, again in December?
Sure.
I did call printers on Monday and they said everything, they didn't see any increases in prices, so they don't see why they, anything's going to go up, so...
Do we know what the school, and the school's going to pay for their section of...
They already did.
No, but for this coming year?
Don't know what's going on with that.
Well, if I raise the stake this year, I'm pretty sure he's not going to try to stick it on me again.
The, but do we know what we're going to do? We're going to have three town reports, one for the Athens School District, one for the combined school district, and the town...
I don't, I don't know what they're doing there. That's them. That's, you've got to talk to the school board.
There is no more Athens School District, right?
No. And it's supposed to be all finalized, is it the end of this month? I think it's the end of this month. I think they're coming down with a final decision, the state of this.
Well, I don't think the court case is going to be settled then, but it's one of the spring court designs.
He's in the sitting court.
That I saw in the paper, they said something about the end of the month.
That may be the Board of Education, I think. But I, I don't... All right. Nothing else? We will recess for a brief moment, minutes from the prior meeting. I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comments. During public comments, the select board will not allow any personal narratives and points about any elected officials, appointed officials, or employees of the town. And if an individual has an issue they wish to bring to the select board concerning personnel, it should be written and submitted to the select board. Any comments during public comments should be germane to the issues the select board can address. All right.
Yes. Someone is doing the Athens writing on the computer. I got four phone calls and one man came to my home to find out where the illegal gravel pit on Valley Cemetery Road was. There are three of us that are moving our dirt around. None of us are selling or moving dirt off of our land. This is fake news put on the Athens page. Why and who is allowed to do it? I'm sorry, I'm not obeying any of the dictators of our, at any time, I'm sorry, I never have and I never will. I've asked for time to talk for harassment and discrimination going on in this town, but you as a chair, David, you have refused to allow me and others to speak. But it's okay for you to threaten me on November 15th, 218 with the, and if you win the town, the case against the town, you, I will have the town countersue you. Well, I won the case and I'd like to know when you're going to countersue me, or did you just want to harass a little old lady who's disabled? Now, in the news part, the Grafton Grange 117 presented five Athens and three Grafton students with the third grade with their dictionaries on Wednesday, this Wednesday. Thank you.
All right. Well, Dolly, I never, I never threatened you or if you felt that way, then you were mistaken.
Well, thank you.
But we do not have a town website or a town Facebook page, so we have no control over that.
And just to clarify, you did not win your case, it was settled out of court. It was...
Yes, I got the money back, yes, thank you.
All right. Boards and officials. But Darlene, did you have anything for public comment?
No, I don't think so.
Boards and officials. I did sign a contract and Darlene has a copy of it with the engineer for the meeting house. The, and that was supposedly a meeting on...
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Do you know what happened with that?
I got a brief email saying she wouldn't be there yesterday at, I think it was 10:30.
And are they going to continue working on that into the rest of the fall or you have to wait for the report to come back or you don't know?
Well, she was going to visit at that point and then come up with something. She was going to meet with Dawn, Dawn and Sherry, I believe. I didn't name, the other committee go, do you know?
Can light it, but I do.
All right. And I thought Dawn might be here to tell me, tell us what happened at that, but not here so... All right, boards and officials. Boards and officials. All right. We received a request from Bonnie Hitchcock for the Taylor Hill Association to use the school on the 25th.
October 25th?
October 25th. I'll make a motion that we allow that.
I'll second that motion. For a meeting?
For a meeting.
And will someone unlock the building for them and be there or will...
I think Darlene has a key, right?
Okay. Do you know what time that is?
I don't. Do you know what time it is, Dawn? Seven maybe?
I'm not sure, but I think it's six.
I can, I can call Bonnie and find out. Okay.
Do they need to read this policy or anything to do with, or do we need to post that up there or is it...
Well, we'll come to that here. But because people had to call and everything about using the school and everybody came up, I, I got, you've got a copy.
Yeah, and it's just one that was currently on use for the school.
No. This is a different one. This is kind of a BLCT one. I had the one that was in current use for the school, which didn't, didn't seem to me to be all that... It, it just said that they could use it, you couldn't discriminate, and it was less... I have it here. Oh, here it is. It was, it is a policy of the Athens, of the Athens Grafton School District to support the primary use of school facilities and ways to complement regular school activities. School activities take precedence and authorization. You go through the principal and it didn't really, that's what, that's what theirs was right now, so...
So back to requests of moving the building?
Yep. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
And this will be a first reading for this tonight and you'll adopt it next?
Yes, we'll bring that. I think we can adopt policies in one meeting. BLCT, I looked that up.
They didn't say you put it?
They say you can.
Oh, okay.
But it's been our practice to have them at one meeting and then if there's...
First reading and then...
...or anything and then people can look at it for the second meeting. So we'll go on to review the policies, use of public buildings. If anybody wants to see this, we can make them a copy of it. It's for the use of this building and the former Athens Elementary School building. And if anybody wants to see that, they can see that here. And with this, it will go through Darlene if somebody wanted to use, use the building and she'll have a calendar like we've got up there and as long as it doesn't interfere with anything that we're doing. Has somebody from town local that wants to do it?
So then she would have the authority to say yes, if they can use it, it doesn't have to come to them?
No, she would have the authority, so it wouldn't have to be that we'd have a special meeting or anything. Anything you see in the policy that you want to change or no different view?
So the only thing is we would have to designate her to be, to do that so that...
It is in there, but...
It is in there. It says the town clerk or somebody specially designated. If she was gone or something, we could designate somebody else to do it.
The town clerk of Athens are designee of the select board, so...
Yeah. So if Darlene didn't want to do it, we could get somebody else to do it. All right. The next one, policy. Been talking with, well, Matt talked to State Highway and stuff about a policy for roads and for adding on the road, adding on a road or upgrading a class three road.
Class four.
Class four road to a... Class four road to a class three road. Or a new road that was to be done. We got some information from the state. Some of the other towns around have policies as well. And we ran this by the, our, our attorney, around Paul Gillis. And he, he sent us back the policy that we have here. Have you both read that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's fine. But again, I'd like to just, you know, adopt it tonight.
No, we're not going, yeah, no, no, we're gonna do it. But does anybody want a copy of this?
I want a copy of that.
This is still draft until it gets approved?
This is...
No, that's on two sides. And if anybody else wants a copy of it, did you want one, Dawn?
She's gonna make it.
Did you see, did you get a copy with Matt? You saw the policy there?
Yep.
Anything in there that State, State Highway looks that open?
Yeah, I said it, everything was good.
And I know that some of the policies that the project committee has implemented, we put on it, should be reviewed every so often. And I know that we don't have a policy manual that is like the whole thing is reviewed every so often. So maybe you should review it three or four years to get it again, just to make sure it's...
You wouldn't personally do that all the time?
Yeah.
All this policy really does is it just takes that, the standards that the state, you guys got signed tonight. All it is is a simplification of that. And all that policy really is.
And it just gives everybody what, you know, so that everybody knows what if they wanted, actually the road or what our roads is supposed to be and, you know, the town roads and that we're gonna do it.
I mean, especially like, I know the board changes every so often. And it's good to review the policies, especially if a new board member comes on, just so... I'm not complaining about you, but anybody could happen to. But this way, you know what the policies are, so if they're reviewed, say every three years or something, and just make a rotation of them.
That's usual, right? But this isn't, this policy was just so that we can have it all down there, that everybody knows what, what, the way it is. I know we had talked about a two rod road, but State Highway said it had to be three.
State Highway lying to somebody because they got paper outside, hell, it can be twenty feet wide. Thirty-five cars a day walking down that road for this two rod thing.
They told you three rods, right?
Well, the same woman that told us three rods, told me and April Clayton, that's twenty feet wide. Thirty-five cars a day up on that road, that's legal road width.
Is that the road width itself or the right of way width?
That's the right of way width and the road width.
I think that they had said that...
It said three rod, fifty foot.
But they said that the roadway itself should be...
About, uh, any traffic.
Eighteen to twenty-four, uh, eighteen to twenty-two feet, right? And twenty-two is like this out here, which seems excessive for that road to have to be, but...
How wide is one rod?
Sixteen and a half feet. So it's what, forty-nine something?
Forty-nine and a half.
Yeah.
And Dawn, you're saying that she told you only twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty?
Twenty feet, what they told us. She's gotta write in the paper, they wrote the, printed it out for us.
Cause Matt asked specifically what it should be there?
And they said nothing less than fifty.
But, I mean, the three rod wouldn't be travel portion, that would just be the right of way. As I think everything in town is three rod, except some parts of thirty-five.
Correct.
I don't believe that, but maybe. I know you ain't got a fifty foot right of way up two on Walker Road and you ain't got a fifty foot right of way up both of them.
What do you think you do?
I don't think so. When we wind down, Matt, and I wind down, we had to get permission from the landlord to move the stone walls, cut trees on the other side and put out the, that right of way. And I know that going up to there, it's twenty-two feet.
I think if...
Sam Farren, do you remember if those are three rods?
Three rod. That's what the state said, everything is three rod, unless otherwise...
Well, that road up out of the end of it, that's a three rod road.
It's a three rod road.
There is a stat, there is a statute that says that if it is not reported in, in the town records, land records, that any road is considered to be a three rod road.
Any of the roads in town recorded in the land records?
Some of thirty-five is reported, but nothing else is recorded. So I think it makes, makes everything a three rod road.
There it goes. Is that three rod, there it goes?
Yes.
Alright, I know.
Well, hell, it's a three rod road.
So, I mean, we wouldn't be tearing down the porch to, to do it.
Fifty feet between the walls, maybe. They said that doesn't matter. When I asked them in the states, all that was when they put the, the walls in was for the traveling of panels.
I know that up on thirty-five there, there's pins right in the driveway there.
Sure, I know that, but I know everyone went there all the way down through there. Well, the bend ended block off, the block off on a bit, there's no bit.
No, up here there are. But when they rebuilt the road sixty-four, sixty-nine, and I think those sections are four rod.
It could be a bit.
Some sections are pretty white. And I think that that, those are recorded. My house is recorded a four rod road, so right in the middle of my garage there, it's a right of way. So, we will, we will pick these up again next, next meeting. But no changes that you see or need right now?
No.
Nothing that you're seeing?
It's going to adopt.
Yes.
Yes. And we will, we'll give to anybody then that wants to talk about it. Alright. Anybody else have any comments on the policies? Move on to roads.
Everything's going good. We're getting ready for winter. We got a bunch of leaves and stuff to clean up. Hopefully, force oil gets here and we can get it all done. And we're getting all the equipment ready.
I noticed they were doing the practice here.
Yes, they didn't get as far as I hoped and they wouldn't...
And that's all they're gonna do? I mean, they heard you did anything at the mile meeting.
Nope. They worked on it. They worked on it for eight hours.
Yeah, it gets easier and, um...
But...
There was more practice than I...
I didn't realize it was cracked as bad as it was.
And I thought they were people one day, one day, and I thought they were not good.
I thought they'd do, they could do more than that.
Yeah.
But apparently not.
It was bad, they wasn't blocking it.
Well, they started before that.
They were setting down a unified amount of law.
Alright.
They did start before that because I took my practice on.
You have the road, road standards for us to approve here. I thought we had done this earlier?
Uh, that's, you adopted the old standards in the spring. So now we gotta adopt the new ones that just came out.
What's, is there a major change between the two?
Very small. There are a few changes here and there.
It'll show you like what your ditch is.
That's the Act sixty-four part that we're gonna have to apply with.
I will make a motion that we sign this.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? So, make a copy of that and would you take that back to the state?
Yep.
Where is that road standard?
Uh, give it off the top. What was it? Town and road bridge standards.
Town, road, and bridge standards?
Yep. Anything else on roads?
Shit, the truck is coming.
All the equipment is doing?
Yep, the truck's all undercoated.
And all the other equipment is aligned and all the chain, chains and everything or else?
Uh, chains, maybe chain is coming tomorrow. Supposed to be here today, but it said either Thursday or Friday, so it's going to be here tomorrow. Hopefully, get your order in. All the chains should be here within a week or two once your order's... I gotta go off. We had one standard chain for the little truck. I have, I found one for the big truck. So all we need is one, so I don't have to buy the two expensive ones that all you guys bought last month. And I gotta buy some odd end stuff, a couple pistons and stuff like that for the little one.
And we got gravel on here?
A little bit. Spent all of our gravel line until after the first year, so I figured I'd just hold off and order it like in February when we normally do. And drop it off at the, at the three spots and go from there.
We're going to want, oh, and you're locking, for whatever I know, you're locking up the town garage. The town garage locked in now because we had some couches.
Oh, the driveway, you mean? The garage's locked in.
Yeah, the garage's always locked, but while we're not there.
And they bought in couches, TVs.
About fifteen yard dumpsters worth.
Again?
Again. In one weekend, it was quite impressive.
So...
So what happens if someone needs to get something stamped or something, how?
Um, wintertime, once we get snowed, they can't get to the, they can't get really pretty. Oh, and I have to get a road sign for Jerry Hennig. Your sign is gone. Bridge nine-one-one. Somebody asked me to order them one.
They have new, new requirements here.
Yep.
Alright, we'll move on to warrants and mail. Yep.
It's the easy ones first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
I called him to see what I gotta do.
You got all the checks in here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've done put it off the other one second, but there's a lot of...
No, it was a lot better to do it twenty-two years.
My warrant's filed out somewhere. She's supposed to go to New Haven, but somebody, you saw that, Dawn?
I saw that, I got one too.
That's all the...
That's the beamers, yeah.
Why so many?
Uh, it's the quarterly.
Okay.
How much longer do we have on the backups?
Probably down to there.
We're gonna have two years on that, haven't we?
Very soon.
Left here.
Does it stop here?
Oh, it did, yeah.
So how many licenses do you order?
I get two hundred because one year we went over a hundred.
Oh, so that you cannot order, you have to order a hundred at a time?
Yeah.
And what have you been?
This year it's only around...
Now, what happens if you only order a hundred, then you can place a second order? And what happens if you, they don't take them back, so you don't use them?
Yeah.
Yeah. And is that the only company that order them from? Cause maybe just order it. Order a hundred and then if we need a second hundred, I don't know.
Or it could go to some...
Is this for the...
Yeah.
And that's just continue?
Yep.
Maybe you just want to file one. This one went to where? No, state, no.
No, they're all...
They're not in order?
They're not in order because they're all on one big sheet. That's the high school. Then we find another one for the...
Is it, is it in alphabetical order?
Yeah, it's still in alphabetical order. But this one is... Going smart on the high school right here. It's already there. There it goes. This should be accepted as, uh, moving out of this. And one of the, one of the standard chains.
Wow, you checking on that?
Yeah.
Because it may be December.
On Monday, they picked up here and then I saw them grafting.
Same guy?
Well, I, so how many trucks do they have?
No, they pick up Grafton, they pick up, they're doing...
Back to that?
Yeah. So how do they know how much tonnage we have? Unless they have a, a scale right on their truck?
I think they do.
Well, how can they bill us for tonnage? That way. Cause if they pick up here and then they go to Grafton...
Call them up and speak to them. Call them up and speak to them.
Knock on.
Yeah. And that's on the bottom sheet. So you want to put it here?
Okay. That's our payment?
Yeah.
Why is the school entrance so high?
I don't know.
There, there's no one there. There's nothing running.
Well, is that outside light, right?
Outside light, yeah.
It's doubled, this building. It's seventy-five dollars.
This building?
No, no, this school.
From last month.
Does it turn this on? Turn it up?
I don't think it's turned up very hot.
There's still.
Being to be used, it's gonna. Well, we, we should take a look through it.
Yeah, we should go up and see the building and see what's going on with it.
I mean, the town garage is thirty-eight dollars, this building is thirty-five dollars, the school is seventy-five.
That shouldn't be right, cause mine's seventy. And mine's on all the time.
You sure the town, the town garage ain't seventy-five and the school is like thirty something?
No, it says right on the bill.
Twenty-eight for one room. Yeah, town garage is thirty-eight.
So we should call them and have them come look and see. I mean, maybe there's something wrong with the meter too.
I would doubt that. It's probably a smart meter, but, um, there must be some things on there that we don't know about. Is there a refrigerator in there still running?
That I don't know.
I don't?
And that wouldn't change it from month to month.
Well, we just started getting them. Last month was our first month.
Did we get a complete month?
I don't think we did. So maybe that's, like if we got.
It'll tell you how many days you got for.
Look, look at the days between September and October.
It say how many?
Because we just got the bill in our name, so I, we don't know what it's been like. Yeah.
Prior usage days was ten. And then this one was thirty.
So that explains it.
Maybe they didn't pay the bill.
No, it's only ten days.
We were only.
We only paid ten days.
Ten days worth and now.
They understand that. So I'm saying for, for seventy-five dollars for a month, something's gotta be.
Something's, something's gotta be running. Basically, I'm like, yeah.
Two hundred and eighty-seven kilowatts.
Check it also the rate that they're charging you because out at my place, they had been told that I was renting and I had a higher rate than as a resident.
No, it's not the, it's not the rate. Rate's fine. It's the kilowatts. There's no reason that should be that high.
Do you have the key to it?
To the school? Yeah.
Well, with the recess from here, we'll go up there and look.
I mean, even if the outside light comes on.
It's not, it's not.
It doesn't, it's not a twenty-four hour light. I mean, it's, it's a motion sensor light, right?
No, it's a photo.
Yeah, it's on all the time at night.
It is on.
Mine is on twenty-four seven.
I'm just wondering if that is an older style one there that's, it's a sodium.
Yeah, put an LED in instead of the whole monofilament.
So we should contact them.
Do we know if there's a switch for that light or is it, uh?
I don't know.
Is it hard wired in?
Get the breaker and check the breaker. You know, that school bus is gonna be being plugged out, the town garage is.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that was.
They did it on their own condition or?
We go bust to a place and put it.
They've been allowed to do it in the past.
Just have one. Really hard you need an outside light there.
I didn't realize how much it.
Was it cause he's just been plugged in all night?
Yeah.
It's not like his meetings there. But here, of course, it's.
Which can't blame who's having on it. So it's warm when you get there in the morning, but.
Right.
Nobody's gonna be going up there.
Six hundred dollars a month.
You need a light, you have a motion sensor so it comes on when someone goes in.
The theme of the town?
I don't know who's driving the bus this year.
Our bus?
It could be totally different.
We have several buses. One of them is, um, Matt County's driving one. And the other one, I don't know. And then the little bus doesn't stay out here. Not if you go to that one. Magic shops are that expensive? Wow. I guess you'd get six of them. Is a fire extinguisher for the trucks or for in the shop? Both.
Is that something that has to be updated?
Nope, they're all within the code now.
Were they not?
I didn't, I didn't have one for the backup and the, uh, new truck. Was that the coal patch?
Mm-hmm.
How much was that? Cause all they gave me was the tonnage slip.
No, it was three oh one.
Hey, too bad.
Two eighty-four and then seventeen tax.
Yup.
Do we have to pay the tax?
I don't think, well, we didn't have it, we don't have an account up there because we haven't been up there in so long that they just said, okay, sign the slip and we'll mail it to you. I give them their mailing address and they let me walk out with the materials though.
Well, we either get a, an account up there or show them our tax exempt so we don't have to pay at all.
Yeah, just set up, why don't you call them, darling, uh, to set up an account there and, uh, and see if they can take off that seventeen dollars for the.
Because that stuff actually works pretty good.
This was a red one?
Yup.
Ready to use it.
Up on thirty-five. And it stayed in ninety percent. To my surprise, I mean, most of them, you know.
Yeah.
Eight hundred?
Still stayed in town. Out right off.
It's eight hundred. Three eight eight, four three three eight.
No, cause we went up there once years ago.
It says that the coal patch comes from Tennessee.
Really?
So it said down there. This material was shipped quality pa- pavement repair from plant number in Chattanooga, Tennessee. See, when you put two pair of glasses on, you see better. I mean, look at this. Look at the phone number. Can you read that with, with your glasses?
Not familiar. Can't even read that.
Get in there, guys.
Anybody marking it down on the slips clear enough so you guys?
I am.
If we don't know, we ask.
Okay.
Isn't that more than we budgeted for?
Probably. Yeah, I thought we budgeted only five.
I didn't even sure it was that much. Quiet question. It's five.
What is that? It's, uh, key neutral aid?
Contracted services.
Second, seven, seven-two-five-oh is what you budgeted.
Okay.
That's not too far.
If, but that's not, is that just for them or is that for both of them?
No, that's just for them.
Just for them, alright.
And it's another five thousand. Second's over.
Yup.
So it's just a couple hundred dollars more than we budgeted.
Do you wanna call Triple T? Ask him about, whether they pick up the graph?
On the same day?
Yeah.
Well, I know, I know it's on the same day, but.
It's the same truck?
It's, ask him if it's the same truck.
And how do they?
It was at ten o'clock in the morning they were picking up in Grafton and if they picked up here at eight o'clock for them to get all the way back down to Brattleboro and back and to.
Yeah, that's impossible.
It's impossible.
What's the number?
Eight oh two, two five four, five three eight eight.
It's on the, on the first page?
First page, yeah.
These are two things we were talking about, were parts.
You need to get the other one.
He should be okay. Oh, okay. So you have to have a bill for them and just?
Nope, no way, Bill. We just have to pay them.
Okay.
This one isn't a bill you stack yet.
What?
Yeah.
You gotta be kidding me?
You got two phone numbers. We looked, we checked it out. Okay, this is the fire phone, fire response. And you got from ten-ten to eleven-nine and then also probably eight-twenty-six to ten-nine. So we got a partial payment for last month and then this month.
Three hundred dollars for the phone up there.
Yeah.
We talked about that earlier.
Yeah.
That one's the, the garage in.
The garage.
And here.
How much are those do?
They're a hundred and something.
Hundred twenty-eight.
Hundred and twenty-eight.
For both.
That ain't bad.
No.
I knew I was gonna blow my stamina myself.
Yup, I knew it. Those are those, um, we, uh, they.
All the.
Oh, this, this one's here, this one's here. I'm gonna just take out a bank cash.
Yeah.
These two here, I didn't know if you want me to, uh, if you wanna rebate them or just. Some five cents and eighty-six cents.
Yeah.
Just, just get rid of them? Okay. I didn't know if we had to go through.
I mean, they weren't over, they weren't over just with?
They paid.
They paid over, yeah.
So you have to give it back to them?
Give it back to them.
Got a check for five cents. She didn't want, I, I was gonna give it a change and she didn't want it.
And then that's, she donated the five cents and.
What about this one? Eighty-six cents.
Do you see her?
No, I don't see her.
Send it, send it to the check.
Okay. We didn't make it out.
You can just make that out.
Well, I can take that out, okay, cash, sure.
Yeah. I mean, if you're sorry or something, just take it back, pay the cash.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that.
I spoke with them about, uh, that bill in August.
I did too, and they took it off. Six, yeah. Join up as you can. We'll send it for you. So this, um.
Hold it back.
Hold it back, go see.
So your checks out for those, but you don't have those for individual ones?
No.
Okay. And just get the one from each year. And the ones with zero, we didn't?
We didn't do.
Okay. This is just a printout from last year?
Just a printout of what we owed, right?
Right.
Yeah. I know, but some of them are at zero, so.
Yeah, but we gave to them last year, but not this year.
That's what I'm saying. So it, it's in, it printed out with them on there because we gave to them four.
Yeah, yeah, we did this year.
Yeah. So you wanna look at all these?
I can see from here.
So Matt, you wanted to talk about this, is kind of where the roads things too?
Yeah, I forgot about that. But, uh.
Is that third page? I only have two here.
That's an estimate from Clark's, they have a new thing for, uh, hammer drilling. That ledge out by McAtires, the one by Ted Perry's, that piece that sticks out on Cemetery Road. And then the other one by Cookie's Drive Way. That's for those three spots. And then they gave me a price for, uh, hammering the ledge back on thirty-five going down over Davis Hill. They're gonna hammer it back, hopefully about three feet, and put a little slope it back a little bit.
This is right at the top of the hill, right?
All the way from the Reed Road down to that fire telephone pole.
Well, so where that big boulder pops out right?
That'll be knocked back hopefully.
And did you say right on thirty-five right there too?
Nope, down on Brookline Road. Down here, there's. Down here, there's a couple pieces of ledge that stick out, keep catching the snowplow, as Jimmy can contest it.
But the one that sticks out right?
On thirty-five, no, that's nothing to do with that. Because that can be just dug out if we ever wanted to.
That big one thing?
Yep, that's, that's how we, that ledge did stick out there. What, four or five more feet? Me and Tommy dug that back years ago. But the guy's stone wall's right on top and I think there's a, a. Pin right on top of that for the property. It's cheaper than drilling.
Need blasting.
Yeah, blasting, drilling and blasting. It's cheaper of the two options.
Are you serious?
Okay.
And when were you thinking about doing this?
Well, I've got enough in contracted services right now to do the small, the one down here. And then after the first of the year in the spring, do the one up there on thirty-five. Just in case we pave and it'll all be done before we pave next year.
And will they honor this price in the spring?
Yep, it says right on it. Work to be done in spring of twenty twenty.
How far back do they, you can take that one up there?
Hopefully as far as we can get it. You know what I mean, if it, if it's going fast, they'll take more, if it's not, they'll just do. Get it back at least two to three feet, hopefully. He thinks it'll come pretty easy up there because they blasted that once back when my, I think my grandfather did it.
Probably they did when they put the road up.
Yeah. The one, reason why it's so much down here is they gotta move twice. Come in, unload the excavator, hammer the section, load it back on the trailer, move it, hammer section, load it back on the trailer, three times. Good, all the ledges is in just one spot.
And you're saying that there's some contracted service to do this right now?
I believe there is. When the contracted services using.
Didn't we have that remark for something else or no?
We didn't do the culvert installation on thirty-five.
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Do you really wanna do that next year?
Yeah, but that comes out in next year's budget, not this year's. They're doing.
Right, right.
But uh.
How much is it? Thirty-one. Thirty-two is left in contracted services.
Thirty-two?
Yeah.
But I'm, but generally contracted services, it's money. Pay per unit?
Oh.
Generally contracted services, contracts that we already have that we.
Well, we were gonna have this contract for thirty-five. Those culverts.
That'll be done next year. And I got fifteen hundred left to pay equipment rental. So I, there's money enough in the budget to do it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we do the thirty-nine hundred ones. And uh, I will give the other estimate to the budget committee. But they will be able to get up there and do it this year.
They were all excited when I said it's nothing, that one up there is nothing I want done until. In the spring. Because it's a lot more hammering than what they're gonna do down here, that's a lot cheaper, it's, they're pretty happy to have. Work first thing in the spring. I told them they can do it during mud season if they wanted to because it's right on blacktop. Can't work anywhere else.
And they will uh, they'll pay for the traffic control out of that?
Uh, no, I think we have to be the traffic control.
Doesn't state that in there, does it?
No, there's nothing to do with traffic control in there. We can flag traffic for them, we gotta do what we gotta do.
Would you ask anybody else?
I've asked another guy that has a hammer drill and he never got back to me, it's been over a month. Everybody's busy just down here.
Yes.
We want to pay this one, we want to pay it till next month.
What?
Yes.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay, they do it.
Yeah. They can't, they can't do that till the first week of November anyways.
Yeah.
Well, that's in two weeks.
Yeah, but, so I'd be on next month's warrant.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion to the second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
And do they take, I, and do they take all the debris away or do we, what do we do with it?
We're gonna haul it down back to the town garage, use it for riprare.
And you're using our trucks, they're not gonna haul it for you?
Yep. Yeah, we're gonna use our backhoe to pick it up.
I mean, if they swallow enough pieces that you'd be able to.
Yep.
Alright.
They'll make it swallow enough for brat, then we won't mind it.
I don't want to spend that much time. Executive session, does anybody have anything that we need? I don't know of anything.
Not that I know of.
Select board comments?
Are you, can I give you an email?
No, yes. We'll do that.
We'll do that later.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Jimmy. Thanks for joining us.
Select board comments?
I did, that was it.
That's it, alright. Public comments on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but I'd like to welcome Jimmy.
Alright. Alright, um, I will make a motion that we recess and that we go up to the um, former Athens School. If we see uh, what's might be going on up there. No decisions will be made up there.